TV land is a whole lot easier than the other boards.
You want me, ZBA has asked me to post something on all post offices in here to see if I can get members interested in that.
You, you could do that. I would think hanging out at the dump and cornering people.
And he also asked me to do a Facebook, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not posting things on my own Facebook account, I'm sorry, I'm just not doing that, so.
Yeah.
That's out of the question, but I will post it around town and here and at the post offices. So if you want me to do that for you, I can.
Yeah. Spend Saturday afternoon at the dump, twisting arms.
No, I'm good, I'll, I'll post something.
Approval of the agenda as presented.
So motion, second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Approval of the January third joint motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh yeah, I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the January third meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Yep.
Public comment, seeing no public, we will close the public comment period. Public hearing, we have case number twenty-three oh four continued June seventh, July fifth, August second, September sixth, October fourth, November first, December sixth, January third, twenty twenty-four. It is a boundary line adjustment for Agent Wesley Smith of Horizon Engineering for property located at Grayson Drive, tax map one thirteen, lots fifty-five and fifty-six owned by William and Lynn Oxford. Who do we have tonight to address this?
Wes Smith from Horizon's engineer. We did receive a letter after some delay from the, we got a R F M I letter back from State Subdivision after they finally reviewed it. They said we needed a letter from the Board of Commissioners from Idahois saying that water was available. I thought that was kind of a moot point since the lots already existed, but they required it. I was able to get the letter yesterday. I, immediately after I had the R F M I requested that, but they had switched commissioners, they canceled the previous meeting, so it took two weeks to get the letter. They were, thankfully, they were gracious enough to write the letter yesterday. They wrote the letter yesterday and sent it to me. I submitted it to D E S and got the State Subdivision approval today. I forwarded all of that to, to you guys for copies, but I have single copies here. So now that I have this in hand, the Matt from Alpine Title, Matt Winger, can take the, any of the language that's included in the conditions, which I don't see any additional language that would be detrimental. It just says it's approved on it based on the current site conditions and having municipal water, so. That's, that's pretty much the summary of what I got, but I don't have his letter because I just received this subdivision approval roughly at, I think, like sometime around noon time today and forwarded the email that I've received from the state to the planning board, so. Matt obviously didn't have time to write his language, but I'm hoping to get that as soon as possible and get that over to the lawyer to review. So that's the only thing missing from this and the, I believe, any verbiage included in his document will be included on the plan. The State Subdivision approval number will be included on the plan, but I didn't make any plan revisions, like I said, I just got this today. It was probably impossible to have all of those things happen between when I received this and seven o'clock time, so.
How much work does the attorney have, how long of a?
I think he was done. He was just waiting to make sure there was nothing different in the approval that he wasn't expecting, so the lawyer didn't have to review it twice.
So he should be able just to get the lawyer.
I think he'll be able to just turn it around, but I don't want to speak for Matt, but I believe, in my opinion, there's nothing here that is any different from what I've already seen. So, I, hopefully he's not on vacation or something, you know, hopefully he's available.
Tell him to come back.
Yes, hopefully he's available and we can turn that around in a day or so, whatever, and get that over to the attorney and that can be reviewed and then next meeting, I'm hopeful that we'll have everything, but if there's, seeing that there's no conditions on this, you'd like me to look at this.
I think they have.
I don't know if you've seen, I don't know if anybody has seen the plans, but there's no changes to the plan, so I don't know if there's any, any other, can, any other concerns or whatever that I can address between now and the next meeting that I like.
Is, is D E S requiring that the property have access to the municipal water system versus drilling their own well?
Yes, so that's, that's an approval of the, of most of the lots in that subdivision.
Right.
From back with, was that, it's a typical thing for, if it is community water system that they, they, they approve it with community water.
Prefer that. Yeah.
So that you can't just put your own well in there, but some of the Idahois' lots don't actually have, didn't actually have the pressure back in the eighties. They were, they're doing a much better job now, but that, some of the lots weren't able to get that, so that when, if that does happen, you have to apply to have enough usable area to have your own well. There have been lots in there in Idahois that do have their own well, but these lots are conditioned upon the fact that they have enough usable area with community water. If they don't have community water, you'd have to go back for State Subdivision approval, which we don't expect. There's other houses on that road that have water and we expect to be able to hook up just fine.
Yep. So you weren't required, the applicant wasn't required to go through the hookup process, which is a ten thousand dollar fee to the.
It's the, it's the pressure test, so.
Yeah.
Typically before, years ago, we're always able to do when we do septic system design is get that water is available at the site.
Right.
That they know that the rough calculations are good enough, which they wrote the letter saying that, yes, water, water main is there, it is available, but until the pressure test is completed, basically what this says is that they won't know with that.
Exactly.
But they won't know exactly, but that has to be done. That'll be done during the building permit and septic design process, that's when that happens, so.
Is there a, in the water main, is there a tap for that lot to be able to go in and do a pressure test at that point?
I would imagine, but even if there isn't, that's what the ten thousand dollar fee covers is the hookup and that.
It's engineering, it's a hydraulic study to determine whether there will be sufficient pressure.
Is it a physical test though?
It's a computer test based on pressures that have been known to be taken at other points within the district based on elevation.
Within a certain period of time?
Uh, yeah, usually during peak demand in the summer.
Because what I've experienced with Idahois, they say water's there.
Yeah, no, no, we've had those instances where we told an applicant that there's a water main there and there's none.
Right, so this one there is actually a water main there, we, we.
Yes, yeah, you have houses nearby that.
Yeah, and it is, we did survey and find some water shops, so we know that it does definitely, that's, so that's not a problem, but it will be a condition when the septic system and the building permit comes that the water test be done first.
Right.
And that is like, like Jay said, it's ten thousand dollar fee. I was not aware if they do the communal, computer modeling or if they physically go to pressure gauge up to the, I don't know how they do that.
Sometimes they do both.
Yeah.
They'll go to the nearest adjacent house, put on a device that monitors the pressure over seven days as well as doing hydro model, just to see how close they're together.
And maybe you do know, do, I believe that the fee does cover the tap hookup to the, to the lot too, in case there is a.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does. Yep.
Chairman, what is your pleasure?
So you're looking for a continuance?
I would, yes, I'd love to have a continuance so that we can get those documents back as soon as possible and be able to do this. I'm, I'm hoping that that's not going to have to happen again.
Well, one month.
But I do have everything except the letter, I mean, the, the D language from Alpine Title, which I believe is prepared and just waiting, but as I said, I got this today in the D S R A M A, do welcome to.
I'll make a motion, Chairman, that we grant a one month continuance to get the final piece of the puzzle here.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to continue this case for one more month. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of a continuation vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, I'm very hopeful. As I say, everything is there except this is the last piece, so.
Hand that over to.
Yeah, sure, no problem. You guys had copies of it, but if you want to take a look at it, this is the big copy. I know that you guys don't have a big copy, right?
Some are much more.
Oh no, I can do, I can do a lot of this.
This one is like the thirty-four by twenty-two, like playing size.
I can probably zoom in and bring it down.
Yeah, if you ever want big copies.
On your email today, you've emailed Mark Lucy just saying no.
Yeah, he's, he's, I copied him on there because he.
Oh, I thought you meant him.
Nope, Mark, nope.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Nope, I send everything directly to you and I let you, I don't want to, I don't want to break the chain of, of information. I figure you send everything, I, I send you to them, so.
Okay, okay, that works. They gave them, yep.
But Mark Lucy is the, for the submitter for the State Subdivision, he is on there for the test bits and the sub, and the subsurface bureau stuff.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Andy Nadyu is the surveyor and Caitlin Ben-Zach, I always get her name wrong, he is the wetland scientist on that, so.
Okay. Okay. Okay, perfect.
And that, that plan does have the State Subdivision approval stamp on it and everything, so, and the PDF copies you got are the official copies directly from the state also. So I forwarded you the state email.
Dopey.
Okay?
Yep.
Is there anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks Wes.
You guys have a good evening.
Next, number seven is old business master plan, chapter one review, and hopefully everybody downloaded this or got a hold of it somehow or other. And I actually printed the first fifteen pages or something, and it was sort of taken aback at, at how much time it might take to do a comprehensive job of this. So I'm soliciting opinions of people.
Mr. Chairman, in reading through this, one item stuck out in my mind is that either here or in chapter two, we have to address S T Rs.
Yeah. Yeah.
And.
Yes.
Yeah, in here as a priority.
Not to jump ahead, but based on Paul's comments, I looked, jumped ahead to chapter two, and it talked about the survey that was taken in nineteen ninety-four. Would that behoove us to send out a survey through MailChimp or including Paul pointed about S T Rs so that we can get it right?
Are you volunteering to be the administrator?
Yeah, they're easy enough to do, but I, I guess the questions, there were very few questions in nineteen ninety-four, but I think we can add, same questions would probably still apply, but we should probably add to that questions about S T Rs. Other issues, maybe cell towers, broadband communications, things of that sort.
I live in that special four-four-seven part of Madison. What do you mean there's a broadband problem?
There's a dead zone.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, we just addressed thirteen B, and that should appear in here as well. There'll be revisions to that, as to reference it.
And what do we think? Can we do this in-house? Do you want to go to the selectman and say, hey, we need twenty thousand dollars to hire a planner? Kate seems to think she can do a whole lot of this.
Well, with your guidance, I mean, I don't know, I'm not going to rewrite this.
But.
You should be able to do it on the computers to modify it, right, if you had.
Yeah, because I, like, I sent everything to you in Word docs, so I, what I found, like I said, the stuff is all over the place up there in different places. There are so many different people that have done this job that there's stuff everywhere. And I was glad I was able to find the Word docs, even though I sent you chapter two in three different sections, but I found the area where everything was.
Is there anybody that goes back that far to be able to lend some assistance on this?
Probably not. No, because I don't know who you had before. I mean, I know you had someone, Chris Young, and I don't know who he was.
We had Chris Young.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we used to.
David Mosley?
Top of the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
David. Yep.
So, yeah, it depends. I mean, I was kind of thinking you may be able to get in there and just update the demographic stuff and the, and the housing stuff. But I'm sure if you went to Bob Boyd and said, hey, we need an update from twenty twenty to today on bill, billing permits, that he would look at you like you're crazy.
Probably not.
So I, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I have the sense that the folks upstairs are pretty busy already, so.
Well, one of that, the demographics though usually show up in the annual report that Linda does, well, Linda and you, I believe, probably, and Mike Burks.
Number of acres in current use, residential land, number of dwelling units, population. I mean, somebody's going to spend days.
Yeah.
This isn't going to be a quick thing. I mean, even with, with the conservation, I mean, we've been talking about chapter eight, the master plan, for how long?
Two.
We're just getting to some sort of negotiation, but like it's plenty.
So.
That's just one chapter.
The one thing I, I noticed, and it's not a master plan issue as much as it is an application issue, is that nowhere in our subdivision applications does it ask if you're in the wetland conservation district or if you're in the groundwater protection district. And those are things that you'd want to trip over. Cause I, I said, oh geez, groundwater protection we kind of get, but wetlands conservation, I don't know. And I'd forgot all about planned unit developments. It's like, oh, I remember that, that was so long ago.
Yep.
We don't even think about those anymore.
I did get the plan from J Vizio, I have his ASB O plan, so that was the one last thing I needed for home lot thirty-four.
Yep.
So I did, I was on him about it, so I did get it.
Yeah.
That'll be getting recorded. There was one last, what, last issue with Bantil Hollow, which was an ASB O plan that was outstanding, and I chased him down and kept at him and I got it, so.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to the wetlands protection areas, should we also be considering wellhead protection radius or areas that are within wellhead protection?
I think on any, we, that stuff gets tripped over pretty easily on a.
It should. Now, just going back to the applicant we just talked about tonight, I was curious as to why those properties, those lots, had that restriction from D E S back from, what, the seventies? And it came to light that right across the street were the old wellheads for Idahois called the Gretchen Fields, Gretchen Wellfields. That's probably why those lots were restricted from having construction on it. Cause I, I just didn't understand why are those lots, out of all of Idahois, restricted? You know, it was probably because the wellheads are across the street. That was the municipal water supply.
And you, do you still use those?
No, we don't, which is probably why D E S is now granting.
So that's what D E S was.
Yeah. Yeah, we abandoned those wells.
Do you know, are there many lots in Idahois with their own wells? Cause the lots are so small.
It is eighteen so far.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
But how many units are there in Idahois?
They were about eleven hundred lots.
Eleven hundred or was it two thousand?
Not eleven hundred.
Well, it consists of approximately a thousand house lots with four hundred and sixty homes, how many homes?
We're over five hundred now.
So that's got to be updated.
Yeah.
Most of which are seasonal.
Yep. Yeah, I think we had ten last year and ten built this year. Good pace.
And most of them are seasonal?
I would say, yeah, it's, it's.
The two we just finished with Habitat are seasonal.
Yeah, well, well Habitat, that's not seasonal though, right? That's full-time, right?
No, full-time.
But I think most, well, there's one house being built that I know of that's going to be full-time.
Increasingly full-time.
Yeah. See, you know, I've mentioned, you've mentioned this before, I've mentioned this before, but let's just say three quarters of seventy-five percent of the homes in Idahois were just seasonal. If they ever became, even half of that population became full-time, that'd be an impact to the town. The, the housing stock that's in this town, if even half of the seasonal homes became full-time, you're going to notice it.
Well, isn't that the trend now?
It is.
More people are coming up.
Yeah, they're, they're working from home, they've got broadband, they can stay here as opposed to sitting in an office. That should be one of the questions on the survey.
And so what do we think of the survey?
Has anybody jumped ahead like I did to chapter two and look at the survey that was done in nineteen ninety-four?
Do you have it?
I don't have it with me, I didn't print it. It's very short, but just to get feedback from the community, I think it'd be worthwhile taking those same questions, which are very standard, the rural character of the town, things like that. And then explain, expanding upon that, some of the issues.
Thirty years, you said ninety-four?
Ninety-four.
Okay, yeah.
We had something more recent of.
Yeah, Noreen did something.
Yeah.
She, yeah.
I thought I remembered something.
Yeah, with cell towers and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
That one, I don't, it seems we still have growth, but it doesn't seem like it's a big issue.
True, and I guess there was a push, you remember a few years back where the selectman asked this board to re-zone certain sections of town along one certain.
And we did, but it's reflected in.
Yeah, yeah, to make it more commercial.
Yeah.
Just stepping back, Noreen, would she have gone back to two thousand and ten on anything that she would do, have done and remembered? Yeah, would that be a resource to tap her?
Oh yeah, absolutely, she keeps every, yes.
The trouble with those polls is they end up being push polls as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I mean, getting some history, Kate, the stuff she mentioned about, you know, how this was, she found it and it was pulled together, maybe she might have some history on it.
The chapter two that you're talking about, which is the survey and the community goals, that's not in the master plan, it's posted on the website, just so you know.
Really?
That's the land use that was done in two thousand and two. I sent you guys, I have them all marked. That was, that was the chapter that was done in two thousand and two. And then I also sent you folks the chapter that was done in two thousand and twelve, just because I wanted you to see what was done. And that information that you're just talking about, the ser, the community goal, center of community goals is different than what is in the master plan and on the website, which I have printed out. So I want to step ahead and print it that out, so this is not in there. So, and just cause I don't, so I don't know, you know, we, I think you need to figure out what you want to put in and what is actually in there, maybe.
You know, I think that it has to be, we have to figure out some kind of survey. Everything's so data-driven now.
Yeah.
And we seem to be like way behind the, the curve, right, but, but if we are, so is everyone else. So.
So Kate, what, what you had sent us earlier a few months back.
That was the actual Word docs that Paul had asked for that I found on, on the system that somebody had done.
Right.
In chapter two, there were revisions that I, I don't think ever, I don't know what happened to them, if they ever made it in here, I have no idea. That was way before my time, but I sent you the land use two thousand and two and then the chapter two for land use two thousand and twelve, I sent you that as well.
Okay.
But when I went on and I told Mark today, I printed off the actual master plan that is on the website as we speak, and that chapter two is in here.
Not in there?
No, about the survey, about the, the community goals as far as service, it's not in there.
Is there an up, is there a date when that was updated, the website, that you found that that wasn't in there?
The website, the master plan was redone in two thousand and ten, if I want to say, there was updates in two thousand and ten.
One part of two was done in two thousand and twelve.
This was, this was chapter two of two thousand and two, which is not in the master plan as we speak now. And this was two thousand and twelve, which was changed, so I'm not sure what happened. I don't know. Between these years, it sounds, it almost looks like people came up with things and maybe they never got in here. I couldn't tell you, I wasn't here, I don't know, but I know that it is definitely not there. And you're missing, like, all of this is not even, is nowhere to be found, so it's, it's bizarre. Whoever prepared this.
And where did you get that?
That I actually pulled out of somewhere, this is back, this is when I first started, so bear with me, because I had somebody call me and say, we're missing, in the master plan online, the missing page is sixty-four and sixty-five, and I'm like, what? So I looked around and, yeah, they're right. Because it's very weirdly, if you've looked at it and the one online, it's very strangely numbered.
Yeah, the formatting didn't stick.
Yeah, there's page numbers at the top, and the second complaint I had is they scanned it in upside down for this, for this pages. I'm like, I don't know who did this back, whenever. But see, there's page numbers here, and they don't coincide with what is actually there. It's a mess, it's a mess.
Does somebody from the town clerk's office go back that far?
I don't know. Well, Becky's been here. The longest, I think, out of all, out of Mike, Becky, myself, so I'm new, but.
Maybe she might have some input into it, and if you have a relationship with Noreen and stuff, maybe talk with her a little bit. I don't know that well, so.
Yeah, I, I could, yes. So what direction are we going in? I think we need sort of some kind of notion. Call North Country Council and see if they've got any planners that could give us a help?
That's true. Are we members or?
No.
No.
No, it was expensive, it was expensive.
I mean, we are members by our existence, but we're not due to.
It was, yeah, it was really expensive.
But.
Very expensive.
Is there anybody that in town that might have done this in the past as retired that would reach out to somebody like that, see if they could help?
Would be.
I mean, it, it just.
You would know, you're the longest, you're the longest person.
Yeah, Noreen would be.
Yeah, cause last, last, at the last town meeting, there was an attorney that stood up and offered to, some assistance on things that was retired, living up here. And who had done some of the similar work, and offered to.
Is that the same attorney that came to the Z B A hearing too?
Dennis?
No, no, no. There was, there was an attorney that came to the Z B A hearing, the very first one at the elementary school, and he stood up and talked and said he was an attorney.
Right.
And he had a place up here, and he was telling us what, telling the board, the Z B A board, what his thoughts were, what they were doing and how they were heading and so forth. I don't know if he does anything like that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't.
This was the one at town meeting last year?
No, this was at the Z B A hearing, the very first one.
Z B A hearing, okay.
November, I think, right?
The person I'm thinking about is Sean Bergeron. Would he have gone back that far in connection with the town?
Well, probably.
Yeah.
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 Absolutely.
Yeah.
But the trouble is, I mean, this is, you know, unless you want to spend a couple nights a week working on this, I mean, this is a lot of work to do it.
It is.
To re-codify the whole thing and make it.
It's kind of a little bit of a mess, so.
Well, we were referring.
It sounds like it's a lot of a mess.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be nice.
We were referring to the master plan when talking about the S T Rs issues. Other folks, whether you be on one side or the other, they were always referring to the master plan, what the intent was for the town. But again, it's old and maybe not well-formatted, but I think it's probably time to get the feel of the town. Has anybody's opinions changed on the intent of rural character and what is it?
I think most of the old rural, rural characters die.
Yeah.
Back at that time.
Thank you, one.
Back at that time, any selectmen that.
John.
Still around?
John.
That would have been familiar?
John's been on.
Would they, would, would they have initiated the master plan to be finally put forward and printed?
I don't know. I mean, he's the only one I can think of, I don't think.
You can look at the names on the updates. But most of those guys aren't around.
What is the expected?
When you said there was like an update two thousand and ten?
Yes, it was updated two thousand, this, this, this that I printed off today.
Yeah, yeah.
refers to on the website, the two thousand and two and two thousand and ten update.
Are the names the same in there? Two thousand and two, two thousand and ten?
So they must have, you must have done some inserts in two thousand and ten to replace some language that was already in here, is what I'm thinking. Bear with me because I wasn't, I, I, I'm just guessing after I read through this and kind of pieced my way through it and said, oh gosh.
But there's no names associated with it? What was done?
Don't the planning boards usually, planning board members usually sign once it's been adopted?
You still.
Yeah, I remember my first stint on planning board way back when, we did some work on the master plan.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some documentation of that somewhere.
But from what Kate just described, it sounds like because of the, maybe the slip-ins that have occurred over the years, it sounds like maybe there's definitely need to clean it up.
Yeah, I.
Paul, who was that?
I absolutely think so. I mean, we go from page sixty-two.
And about, we went to the.
Oh.
How do you do that?
I can't remember her name. I, I don't.
It's a mess. I mean, I, I looked through this and said.
She hadn't been here that long, she came in.
I can't take.
At some point.
So how about.
Yeah, I'm not that far, I don't think. What?
Oh.
You know who I'm.
Collette, not Collette.
Colleen.
Colleen.
Colleen, Colleen, and I can't remember her last name.
Is she still around?
I don't, I, she was, she came in to visit Bob.
Did she? She had a place on Moore's Pond Road.
Yep.
Because it was next to my sister-in-law down there.
Maybe she could do that per diem or something.
Going back and forth between there and Massachusetts.
That might be something. I mean, I could help her when I can, if she needed me to, but maybe she'd be willing to do something per diem and work on this as a problem.
Do you have contact information for her, phone number?
She's in my phone.
And what would be the expected deadline of this board to try to get out a master plan? And we'd have to have a public hearing, right? To review it with the public, I believe?
Probably before it's published, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I mean, if we could, we talked about a bunch of things tonight about people contacting people. If we could, you know, divide it up, contact them, see if we, what they know, get a meeting together with them all, bring them in and see what we can find out. That's the only way we're gonna be able to do it, go back.
So, want me to talk to John? Cause he's been on the board twenty, what, twenty-three years, like.
Yeah, so he should have some knowledge of it and go back, some history.
And Colleen, how long was she doing this? She wasn't doing it very long.
I don't know, maybe three or four years, four or five.
Oh, I didn't think it was that long. I'll probably see from the correspondence.
But I mean, if she might have some insight into what maybe she's.
Well, she worked, she worked in, in the field, I think more, not so much planning, but some of the enforcement stuff.
So, generally, he said Josh, he was around.
Yeah, he was around.
For sure, he was the planning board rep and then early.
I think, yeah, but as much as you need someone clerical. I think you need someone clerical that understands what this document is supposed to say.
Right.
He was around, he was the planning board rep for eight.
So I think you can get ideas, but I, I.
We need somebody to, to read through it, do a little bit of research and help us clean it up or rewrite what we have to. So it's a clerical job that we're looking for.
Yeah.
And Colleen might be a resource for that, but I do remember that she left this position because of some money issues of going above her retirement or what she could do for retirement. There was something there.
She couldn't make that much money.
Right.
Because she was paying all in taxes.
Right.
So that's why she got up.
I would think we'd find a professional. Talk to North Country Council, talk to the Office of State Planning or whatever they're called and say, hey, we're in the throes and we've discovered our master plan's been ignored for twenty years and with a little patch in the middle of it and it's a mess and we need to update it to twenty twenty-five.
I, I think that makes sense, but do we have any money in the budget or?
I don't know. I think we ought to write the selectmen a note and say, somebody should be here.
Yeah.
Pro temp. You know, if, if the assigned person can't do it, somebody pro temp should do it.
Yeah, because a lot of, a lot of time missing. Um, I've read in the paper that Conway is going through, doing updates to plan.
They have eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. But are they doing what they planned or are they doing what they?
Well, they have, they have a huge staff.
Yeah, they've got a.
They have a planner and.
They have a town manager, they have, you know.
Assistant manager and engineer, yeah.
Town engineer, you know.
Yeah.
They have a whole.
A little larger than ours.
They have a whole, yeah.
Did they hire it out?
What? You know, I don't know if they got outside help or not.
Does anybody know anybody that they asked a question?
I can, I know those people, I could go ask. They're gonna say, why didn't you get your permits? Whoops.
Or I can ask Holly too, I'm, I'm friendly with Holly.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, because you know, you have those connections too. But, but I think, I think the notion that we're gonna sit around a table and make that, this, this document work is, is probably not gonna work. It's gonna end up a little worse than this with some twenty twenty-four updates. I was really hopeful that we'd kind of look at it and say, oh yeah, we've gotta adjust some numbers, but we've gotta adjust some numbers and, and maybe Jay's idea of doing a, doing a.
Survey.
Survey is a good idea.
I, I like the idea of a survey, for sure, what has been done for three years, but it's just a matter of pinpointing what we want. What kind of data do we want to glean from that survey?
Is asking for a survey right now, getting ahead, if we're gonna get a planner and have the planner discuss what's going to go into that survey and work with it.
Yeah, I think somebody's gotta look at this document, clean it up, reformat it, bring it back and say.
That's what we work for, right? That's where we start.
But unless somebody else has got like a whole lot of time and some things.
What about going to our attorney, their firm, and see if they know of people that have done this?
Yeah.
Can do it. And try to engage them. Because I think what we're doing tonight is bringing up a lot of questions on it, and we gotta sit down and finalize the questions before we move forward.
I think it's really, it's involved. There's a lot involved and it's not just a simple fix here and fix there, you know?
But if, if you get some of the, if you corral some of this information and stuff, you might be able to do this and sit down and, and go through it.
Yeah, I agree, maybe somebody that's been, uh, you know, have, they've done this before, I mean, they.
Right.
Could help us to.
They could, so if somebody's gonna sit with us and guidance.
There are professional planners too that we've had here.
That's right, yeah, from North Country, I think we had one.
North Country, even that, even the guy that was an independent, I can't remember his name right now, but.
He was a planner?
Yeah.
The young guy, year, years ago.
Yes, I know, that's, reading this stuff sort of really.
That's what you need, we need somebody like that.
That knows what a master plan's supposed to have in it.
And I think you could get somebody like that, sit down with them, you know, for the questions that come up, we should, or maybe you should be able to answer most of them and, and reformat if we have to and put it together. And then there's, there's things you don't know, then go after those.
Mr. Chairman, do you remember the name of Laura Abel?
Yeah.
She worked.
Yeah, top of the hill, that was the top of the hill.
Oh, is that, okay, that's who you're referring to?
Yeah.
I believe, I believe she is a planner for the city of Manchester.
Yeah, she's an engineer, that's much, yeah.
City planner, yeah, she must, and then that young guy was at, right after her, not too long after her, right?
Yeah.
But that's back in the day when we had planners and and I, and I don't, I don't think it's realistic to throw it on you.
It's a lot of, it's gotta be a lot.
Have you seen, have you seen behind my desk with all the STR stuff? It's like, it's taking, it's moving me out of my spot.
But I would just, just to give a reference, back in the nineties, we adopted the wireless communications portion of the ordinance. And at that time, there was a lot of sentiment against the pincushion effect on these hills of all these towers rising up toward the summit. A lot of people just didn't want to see it. Well, now, people are used to them and the biggest complaint in town with regards to communications is we don't have enough.
Yeah.
I said to my desk and I can't get service, it's at my desk.
So the, the, the opinion has seemed to totally change.
Yeah, well, candidate tonight at your store.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about that and I said, well, who in the audience doesn't have a cellphone?
No hands.
Nobody doesn't.
You should have asked the question, who in the audience doesn't have cell service? And always put it one up.
I do. So what do we, where are we, how are we doing here? Do we want to reach out to North Country Council? Our attorney?
I can reach out to Holly, see what Holly, I mean, I can get some ideas from people.
Office of State Planning.
Come back to you and let you know what I find out.
If you could talk to John.
Yep, he's on my list.
See what he knows.
Yep, North Country Council.
Noreen?
And I'll get ahold of Noreen.
Thank you. Um, Colleen, I don't know, I'll see if I can try to find her.
If you get a number, I'll call.
I didn't see, I didn't see her in here, but it's gotta be in my email, because what was her last name?
Common name.
Yeah, it was, like.
Doesn't show up as.
She was after I left, so.
You can scroll through this. Half of the people in here I don't know.
Linda would know.
Yeah, she'll have it.
Yes, Linda.
I'm not.
Or Michael. So why don't we, why don't we do that?
Would you want me to contact Sean or not, or John or no?
Oh, you could, you know, you could and say, hey, you know, Town Madison, we're looking for some help and I mean, it's gotta be a paid position for somebody. I don't know if we have, what kind of money we have or whatever, but.
Maybe he could give a lead on a planner.
That's where I'm, that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd also ask him what he knows about, did he get involved in anything on the master plan?
Yep.
Back when it was updated.
But.
He could probably educate us all on.
Yeah.
It appears to be a quiet, quiet time for planning board anyways, isn't it? Doesn't seem that way.
Yes, and it's, it's good. The other end is going crazy on me, so I'm glad that it's a little quiet, not for you guys, but for me.
Okay, so we think we got a little better plan on the master plan.
Yep.
I'll see what I can find out.
Okay.
And we'll get more information next meeting. Were you leaving all some of that info out?
Yeah, I hear, whatever I get, I will send emails out to people and see what I can find and call them.
New business?
I have some stuff to go over.
Huh?
I have a couple of things to go over with you. In your packets, there were letters that Linda had sent out.
Yeah.
About culverts, so I just wanted to.
I saw that, that was so cute. Like, we don't have any authority of anything except.
No, she was just giving them a warning to let them know. And then she got a complaint yesterday, somebody said that her letter was very, um, what did they use the word? I can't remember what the word was, but.
Accusatory.
And it wasn't. It was just giving a warning instead of getting an order from you saying you have to do this. She was trying to let them know that this needed to be done, so I just wanted to make you apprised of that.
Yeah.
Well, I thought she liked the letter, it was excellent.
I did too. I did too, because she actually had me read it before she sent it.
I mean, it's very polite, it's.
Yes, but she told me yesterday she wasn't polite. Really upset her, so, um, but anyway. So I just wanted you to see that.
On that hill, make, can they, can they trim, tree, trimming?
Yeah.
Of the trees, left everything in the.
In the ditch?
Ditch. Didn't clean anything up.
That's why we have block culverts.
So I just wanted you to see that. I have that, I have copies of these letters in the planning file upstairs as well, so. In case you have to take the next step, which you may have to.
I mean, people, if we have to, I mean, do you think we'll have to?
I don't know. I don't know what'll happen. I don't know what response, I mean, the first response was not a very good feedback, so.
Seems like a pretty quick, what, the, the demand was the middle of April or something?
Yeah.
Up on that hillside, snow don't melt until almost May.
And then I put in there something I received from William Kay from Pike Industries. Put an email in there that I can see for him.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
I don't know if I have to do anything with that, I just wanted you to see it.
Are we supposed to, it's, it seems like he's.
He's done it. I, I just wanted you to beware.
Or she's requested.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman, in regards to this letter. So the bond is for ten thousand dollars, which was pulled at some time earlier, uh, for the restoration of the excavation that's taking place in the Pike pits. So my question would be, if we go, if we convert this bond to a continuous serenity bond, I'm assuming it's still gonna be ten thousand dollars? So as they continue to excavate, is the ten thousand dollars then enough?
Yeah.
To, yeah, restore what eventually will have to be restored? Because the, the pit is getting larger and larger and I'm just curious, as prices go up with reclaiming.
They don't, they don't, they don't excavate. They excavate very little there.
Oh, for the Pike?
Yeah.
Coleman's does. Yeah, okay. So is it just their, um, their operations with the?
Should we run it by our attorney? I don't understand any of this.
Okay, I can send it to her.
Don't you think?
Sure, that's why I brought it to you, because I.
I have no idea.
So as opposed to having a bond issued through, in this case, Liberty Mutual, and I'm not educated in this area very much, but a continuous serenity bond is basically a bank account of theirs who could have that amount of money in it.
Well, not if it's a bond.
No, not if it's a bond. Not if it's a bond, oh, okay.
That'd be a letter of credit.
Right, that'd be a, yeah, I'm sorry, that's it.
I'll send it off to Carrie and see what she says.
Now, I'm just curious, if the original amount for whatever it is that they excavated was ten thousand, but if they do excavate even more, is it enough to cover? What if you mean just over time, prices go up?
Are they excavating, is that the only land that they're excavating?
I don't think they have enough land there to excavate anything and I don't think the aggregate that there, that is there is what they use anymore to make asphalt.
Oh, would they import it in from Coleman?
Yeah. Coleman's and other places.
Somewhere is the definition of like restoration.
Oh, it's all statutory. Yeah, it's all, it'll be all statutory. And I have a sense that they are, you know, they're big boys that work other places and do the job correctly.
I'd imagine they'd so.
And they probably wonder why we're not bugging them for inspections, so. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, uh, going back to the Palmeroy case.
Yes.
I see the, that was something that was on our agenda a short time ago. Yeah, you update on that? What's going on?
They have canceled that and moved, or postponed that and moved it to the, the land court. There's a new land court. What, is it in?
Judge.
There's a land court judge, and where's the location of the court?
I think it's in Manchester.
But, down there, down the southern part of the state, that handles all land court appeals. And they're supposed to do it within thirty days, and that is why, I think that's why initially that thing came up so quickly. And, and then they rescheduled it for something other than we haven't heard, so.
She'll let us know.
So we have not heard about that.
When I send her an email about the, the planner, um, and the email about the, what, the email, we were talking about the email from Kay Williams about the bond, I'll ask her if she has any more further update on that, but.
And what about the death worth lane?
Yeah, let's guess that, they pushed it to.
Well, I I heard, I got a, on the zoning board, I got a motion today that they were trying to file and have their attorney removed. And that was denied, so they're having a, a, a WebEx hearing.
Denied by who?
The judge.
The judge?
So I guess the attorney, uh, for Al, Alfaano, for Tazak, was trying to relieve himself of being his attorney. And, um, so they're having, it was denied, the motion was denied, and they're having a WebEx next week, I think.
So the motion was what?
Denied.
The motion to?
For the attorney to relieve himself of being Tazak's attorney. Something must have happened. I don't know. I don't, I'm not privy to what happened.
Now, is it the attorney that is an attorney? Is it the guy that isn't attorney?
No, 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 not him. No, this is Alfaano's office, which is the attorney.
So Tazak's attorney wanted to leave the case and the court said, no, you can't.
Even I, so they're having a WebEx hearing on Monday, so we'll see what happens with that.
And that's on the.
Tazak.
Tazak and would be on the selectman's denial of.
No, it was, it was the ZBA. It was on.
The ZBA's denial of.
We, the ZBA filed, the ZBA also wasn't pulled in, but because the ZBA was told to stay while the selectman's case went forward first to see what happens with it, so we're kind of at, at a hold with, with our case to see what happens with the selectman's case, but nothing has happened with that yet. We haven't even heard anything, so.
Because that's the one that's going to court?
Yes. ZBA has not yet.
Yeah.
They're just at a hold pattern right now until they see what happens with the selectman's case.
And the other item that we talked about is sending a letter to the selectman. They have somebody here at our meetings.
Yep, that's on my list.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. I think this was his last game, so I think he's planning on being here after tonight, but.
Yeah, I just, we need that coverage. It's set up, it's set up that way for a reason. There's a reason they're here and there's a reason they're not at the ZBA.
So I put that in your packet, same thing I gave you on the conservation, I put a copy of the wetlands stuff in the package too, so.
Okay.
Just because I know they kind of sometimes intertwine, so I just wanted you to have that as well, so you got it twice.
Mr. Chairman, on the new business, uh, not that it regards any case here in town, but just watching other towns, uh, what's happened in Freedom with their STRs and now Bartlett today, the planning board decided to do what we did, which is back off, so, interesting.
And how about five hundred grandfather uses?
Yeah.
I think the horse is out of the.
Yeah.
Oh, well. We'll see. I don't know, our attorney thought that you're gonna see something in Concord sooner or later, so that'll be interesting. Okay, I don't think I have anything else to report. Except the question to you, when is your, were you appointed or elected?
Elected, right, right in. I wasn't on the ballot, but there was a need to fill the seat, and somebody put on Facebook my name.
So you were elected to the three-year term?
I believe it was a three.
I remember him being elected. I'm not sure if it's a one-year, three-year.
I was in the one-year.
I know it was more than one.
It must be three.
Two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah. Stuck.
What, did you sign up yet?
Huh?
Did you sign up?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay.
No. I'm having second thoughts.
I'm adding a three-year. Twenty-seven.
You're up. Twenty-five.
Oh, next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really, was it two-year?
You can't.
Twenty-five on the roster.
I'm not.
Okay, um, correspondence and administration. We got all the correspondence and administration. That's number eleven, number twelve is.
Make a motion, second it.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. I was in favor.
Aye.
Oppose? You guys have it. I think the master plan is gonna be work.